All right, at this time I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. But the record reflected is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. The Village Clock has it at 7:01 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation and Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for the board members, all are present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the Village's website, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. For items with public comment after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once I, the Chair, have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time up to an additional three minutes may be granted by motion of the Village Board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to clerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing their written requests in the Dropbox at the Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Glatz.
Very good, thank you. Item number two, consider approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on October 5th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number two, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Item number three, consider bond parameters ordinance. Andrew?
Thank you, trustee Brennan. Before you tonight, included in your packet is the, is a memo and the bond parameters ordinance which staff is seeking a motion for approval to be moved to the Village Board tonight. On September, at the September 7th COW, I briefly discussed with the Board about a refunding opportunity for the 2013 bond issue, which is currently outstanding, as well as a new money issue of approximately $10 million to replace a bond that is going to be paid off at the end of this calendar year. I'd be happy to take any questions regarding the bond.
Thank you, Andrew. Great job preparing this. Any questions from the Board? No? Is there such a motion to move item number three to the Village Board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, trustee Mueller, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number three, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Item number four, consider the appointment of legal counsel for the bond issue.
I'll take that one as well, trustee Brennan, thank you. As part of the process for the 2021 A and B bond issue, staff is seeking a motion for approval to the Board meeting this evening to appoint Chapman and Cutler as bond counsel and Salt, Ewing, Ernstine, and Lair as disclosure counsel. The Board was provided both engagement letters for the service, and again, this is in relationship to the bond previously discussed in the previous item.
Very good, thank you, Andrew. Any questions from the Board?
Just a question.
Sure.
Just curious, is it standard to have to, or is it required to have to bring somebody in when you?
You have to have bond counsel for these types of items. We're not staffed with a, someone with a background with a legal nature to do this on our behalf, so, so yes, that, we can't take a bond to market on our own without said counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Very good. Any questions? There are none. Is there such a motion to move this item to the Board?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number four, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number five, consider review of the preliminary tax levy.
Could I put on the podium for this one, please? Okay, I will try and keep this brief. The processes here for the tax levies a little bit different than what we've done historically. This first run is not a very detailed memo that you receive in your packet with just a couple options to choose from. I wanted to start the tax levy process almost like an informal discussion, give the Board an idea where staff is, where we see our revenues being projected and how our expenditures are doing. We're almost halfway through the year, so it, you know, it is a little bit premature, but again, our property tax levy has to be filed with both counties before the end of the calendar year. So, we try and take as much information as we have, forecast and look at the impacts that are pending as we see them today, and move forward in that manner. So, I put together a small presentation to go through this, kind of outline the process, outline the proposal, and then outline essentially what the proposal is based off of at this point. So, the tax levy process, we start out with this evening, and again, as I stated, it's, you know, it was a short memo to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at, what we know today, and what we expect to happen in the future. Again, no action is being sought by staff this evening on the property tax levy. We're really looking for feedback from the Board on what direction you want us to go so we can model that detailed information for you for the next Board meeting and start down that process to have first and second read. That being said, we would move to the November 2nd Board meeting. At that time, we would be looking to go through the feedback we received tonight, go through any of the proposal or proposals, if there's multiple options you'd like us to look at, and let the Board kind of select what they feel is the best course of action for the Village at that time, and then move that to the Board meeting for first read. On November 16th, again, like we've done in the past, we would seek adoption of that tax levy so that we can file it with both counties. We would also be looking to have a public hearing that night if it were required. Again, we are only required to do a public hearing if we exceed the 4.99% increase over the prior year because we are home rule, so we don't have to comply with PTAL, which would limit us or any other statute that we are operating under. Again, it would just be a public hearing so that we would notice it appropriately should we have that increase. But as you'll see later in the proposal, this shouldn't be an issue for this tax levy Moving on, before we get started about the proposal, I think it's important for the residents and businesses of Tinley Park to understand where their tax dollars go. We are, our corporate boundaries are part of four different townships, so we have not just four different tax codes, but if you had looked in our annual report, we've got like 15 to 20 at this point. Some are not active, but we have a significant number of tax codes based on the other units of government that are involved in the tax levy process on their own, that we are, you know, one of many in this. So, I chose the most dense tax code for each township just to use as a jumping off point so everybody could understand how that levy looks and, or excuse me, how their tax bill looks and how our levy kind of stacks up against each of them. So, the first being Bremen Township, this is code 13039. Again, it shows a number of units of government. As you can see there, the rate for the Village of Tinley Park is 1.391. You'll notice that that number will repeat itself in all three of the townships which reside in Cook County because that is our rate in Cook County. Our rate in Will County is different. And if, and the next graph shows that the Village accounts for about 11% of someone in Bremen Townships of their tax bill. Now, there are a few other tax codes, so that may vary a little bit, but not too much. Again, the lion's share being the school districts at 75%, and then the remaining 14% are some of those other districts like Cook County, the Forest Preserve, Tinley Park Library, and some other items that are in there. Moving on to Orland Township, the Village represents about 13.34% of that tax levy. I use code 2813 for those following along at home. Again, this is one of the most significant tax codes in that township for Tinley Park residents. And again, the Village is about 13% of that tax bill. School districts account for about 70%, while other units of government account for 17%. Rich Township is a little bit different. We see that we're not as a significant amount of their tax bill. We're just under 9% there. Again, 1.391% is our rate throughout Cook County. And then when you look at the districts here, the school districts in Rich are almost 80%, while we're about 9%, and the other districts are 13%.
Sure. Yeah, that was tax code 32013, I apologize, that's for Rich Township, which I used.
And the last being Frankfurt Township, Frankfurt Township residents are in Will County. So, again, like I stated prior, this is a little bit different. Our rate there is 1.4201, not significantly different, but enough that I wanted to make sure I pointed out, there is a difference county to county. And then, when you look at the breakdown there, the schools are about 2/3 of your tax bill, while the Village is roughly 14%, and the other units of government on that tax bill account for about 20%. So, that's just to give us a baseline of where we are, that we're not a single component. We tend to be the most responsive component and sometimes the most engaged component on that tax levy for residents. So, staff's proposal right now would be an increase of about 3.7 to 4.6%. And I put together a little slide of, you know, why is such an increase being proposed? And there's really four components that really break down where this is being based off of. One is the prior year levy, the other is the current state of inflation, the increased property values in the Village, and then some of the forecasted impacts we've had. Just to bring everybody up to speed from last year, the only increase that we had was statutory obligations for the police pension fund, so we had a zero effectively across the Board for our operating components of the tax levy. And all departments, again, did a great job of following the new spending plan we developed in fiscal year 2021 so that we could absorb the forecasted hit to our revenues that we anticipated for COVID-19. And in a few weeks, we'll be presenting the comprehensive annual financial report for that year, which will show the yeoman's work all of our department heads did to be mindful of their spending and really batten down the hatchets at the time when we really didn't know how bad it was going to be. Inflation, for me, is a big piece of why the recommendation is where it is. Year over year, we're looking at about 5.4% of an increase. That means our dollar is less valuable by about 5.4%, meaning it costs us a little more for the goods we need, it's costing us even more than that for the services we need. This is just the consumer price index change, not the government, not the construction indexes, those are much higher. And again, when we have, when our dollar has less buying power, it impacts our operations and our ability to provide services. Again, because we didn't increase it since the 2019 tax levy, if you looked at the inflation rate over the two-year window, it's about 6.8%. One of the bonuses that we have this year is we had an increase in our property values village-wide. Residential property, year over year, increased about 8.3%. Excuse me, all property increased 8.3%. Residential property was about 8.9%, commercial 4.5%, and industrial went up about 16%. So, there's value that's growing in the properties for those who live in Tinley Park. And then the last piece here is the forecasted impacts. The general funds total revenue for which the property tax funds, at least the portion that's non-pension related, is about 42%. Again, that's a significant portion of our revenue base. Other taxes like sales tax and income tax make up the majority, the other 58%, but those tend to be a little bit more volatile as we found out through COVID and other, some of the other things we've been dealing with for the past 18 months. And the unfortunate piece is, we really haven't seen the end of it yet. As much as I'd like to say we're done and that our revenues are performing pretty well, you know, through five months of the year, there still are some things, and we hear about it in the news, and if, you know, you're tapped into any of the financial forecasting or they're saying, the shipping containers that are not able to be unloaded, you know, affects the goods that can come to us for what we can sell and generate sales tax, as well as the, you know, the vehicle backlog because of the chip shortage that we're encountering. I mean, we only produce 25% of the chips that go into vehicles domestically, so that, again, could severely impact us at some point. Again, a levy increase of this nature could help lighten that burden should those come to fruition. We've got, we've got a plan in place. And again, you know, I'd like to think I'm put in the position I am to be fiscally responsible for us, and this is not something I was excited to get up here and propose tonight. I know it's not ideal, but at the end of the day, I think if, you know, I was putting my best foot forward, this gives us the best opportunity not to impact the service delivery model and high level of service that our residents and businesses become associated with. And the department heads have had two back-to-back budgets with deep cuts to their operations and what they can do, and this would provide them a little relief to get back to normal. And with that, I would love your feedback on where you'd like staff to go this year with the 2021 tax levy.
Very good. Great job, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for putting it together.
I'm gonna sit down so I can take notes and questions.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
With an item like this, we'll just, you know, we'll, you know, it's gonna be a big opinionated item, so we'll start down here with trustee Galante. What are your thoughts on the?
Well, of course, I'm always gonna ask for, you know, how much time are we putting in looking for cost reductions and looking for every way we possibly can to reduce costs, you know? Last thing I wanna do is say we have to increase the tax levy. This year is worse for most people, you know, just as you were saying. So, you know, I know you guys have went through this with the COVID cuts. I've seen you guys do some, you know, really great stuff to find cuts. I would just suggest that we keep doing it, look outside the box maybe, and I work with other, I always wonder, are we working with all the other units of government and maybe finding ways to reduce costs together? Anything we can do, that's all. I mean, I know you guys do the best you can already, so, of course, that's all you can ask.
Trustee Mueller?
Yeah, the part that I'm struggling with is with the CPI, or we know our residents are gonna be struggling, is they have to pay for things as well. So, to give you some very direct direction, I'd like to see a plan where we raise it 2% and take, you know, just by my guess, that should give us an extra half a million, almost 600,000, and still keep it low for our residents who are gonna be struggling with the energy costs that are going up, the food costs that are going up, all these other things. So, if we could do something like that and then maybe see a 3% option as well, and then if we can make a decision from there, I think that's what I'd be the most comfortable with.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Mueller.
I just, you know, I think this last two years have been extremely, obviously, have been extremely difficult for everyone. I think, you know, hitting them with the tax increase is gonna be, you know, I think you're right on the money, a lot of your points. I think you did an excellent job putting that together. I think, you know, inflation is obviously going up, you know, everyone's dollar isn't worth as much as it was, you know, a year ago, so, you know, we did just get some money from the federal government, so I'd like to, you know, see if we can, I'm kind of in trustee Mueller's camp, I'd like to see in a 1% range, maybe 2%, just to see where, where that's gonna get us, but I feel, you know, we're gonna be hitting them from all different angles. I mean, the cost of their food, the cost of their gas, the cost of, you know, their retirement account isn't worth as much anymore. So, there's a lot of things that, you know, these, that our residents are really struggling with, so I'd like to see, you know, stay on the lower end of, you know, I'm kinda aiming at like a 1%, so, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, you have any, you have any thoughts you wanna, you wanna add?
Yeah, thank you. Let me just write this last note before I forget. Thank you, Bill. First, I just wanna say, Andrew, this is the best presentation I've seen so far since I've been here. I like this, the way you put it together. The one thing that stuck out, this is for, shout out for Bill Brady and our Village Attorney, if you looked at the Rich Township cost, it's 1.52% of their tax bill. Orland Township's only .64, thought I'd note that. Good job, Paul. Good job, Bill.
That's the man.
But, to be serious, our departments did do a great job, and I appreciate everything that they did. They, it was tough, they made cuts that, you know, some weren't happy to, but they knew they had to, and they willingly did it to make sure that we didn't, you know, go the opposite way, and I applaud them and I thank them. As some of our businesses and residents are doing well, there's also residents and businesses that aren't doing as well. That's my biggest concern, is the ones that just still haven't got over that hump yet. You know, the Tinley residents, they have done a great job keeping their businesses afloat. They shop Tinley, they stayed in Tinley, and I think we've done better than most municipalities. We're financially, you know, fiscally strong. We got a lot of cash in the bank, thanks to our staff and our finance department. Like Bill said, we got the $6 million in the ARPA funds, you know, we did get a lot of money. That's what, where I struggle with, with raising the tax levy. The other thing is too, is we, 99% of the time, you know, we're always budgeting more than we spend. We always have a cushion built in there. So, the way I look at it, worst-case scenario, you're off a little bit. You know, we cut back on a small capital project. It's not like it's gonna be a large project. You know, the car dealers are comfortable with everything coming back to normalcy within the second, third quarter of next year. Our businesses are growing. If you look at the town all over the place, thankfully to this Board and our staff, Harlem Avenue, you know, LaGrange Road is gonna start building up. Plan Commission's done some heavy lifting with Kimberly and her team with, you know, Loyola coming in. Other businesses are gonna start to follow them. I think we're gonna have a lot of money coming in to offset some of those costs, and from all your reductions, we've taken in a lot more than we originally thought we wouldn't, so I think we're doing well, you know, a lot better for the year. Obviously, we couldn't have done that without some of the costs that you guys did. The other thing is, it's not just us, you know, if we do a small tax levy, then you have the library, then you have the school district, then you have the park district, so that we think maybe it's only, the Village maybe, I don't know what that number would be, I don't know if anyone did the math, but just for conversation's sake, let's just say it's 60, 70 bucks per house for our levy. What's the school district's gonna be? What is the library gonna be? What is the, you know, the park district? By the time you're done, our little levy turns into 400, 500 bucks, and then the assessor comes through, and we know what they do to everybody. Look what they did to our businesses and our residents this year, they hammered us. I just, I don't think we're ready for it yet. I would feel comfortable if we, with everything that's going on, we stayed in the 1% range. I think that would be fair to the Village and to the residents and to the businesses. Anything above that, I just, you know, we just gotta stay, you know, focused and we gotta, you know, and just be smart and not waste money. And we've done a great job of doing that, not wasting money, and because of our staff, and I think that's why we're at where we're at today. Where other towns are scratching their heads trying to figure out how to pay the light bill, where, you know, everyone sitting in this room has done a fantastic job, and we're not scratching our heads for that, we're, you know. So, that's just my opinion. I would ask the Board to take into consideration, it's not just the Village of Tinley Park. Andrew hit it on the head. Our's, our tax bill is really nothing to them, 13% is nothing, you know? Andrew saw an email I sent to a resident, you know, her taxes went up a couple thousand dollars. Her tag, her total tax bill is 639 bucks for how many thousands of dollars for all the services that we get? But we don't know what all the other governmental agencies are gonna do, so we have to take that into consideration as well. We are doing, we are doing well, we have a lot of businesses coming in. I would just ask the Board to consider to not go over the 1%. That's it. Thanks, Bill.
Yep, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I have nothing to add, thank you.
Trustee Sullivan?
No, I gotta, I agree with the 1%. I think, you know, a lot of people are still bouncing back, and I know some people are still not back at work, but I think a 1% would be fair considering that, you know, the price of everything in a household is going up, but everything, cost of our operations is also going up, so you do have to kind of balance it out, but I don't think 3% is what anybody needs right now, so I would agree with the 1%.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, I think I would agree with the majority of the Board here. You know, there's a lot of uncertainties coming up here, and there's been a lot of uncertainties across the Board with everybody, and your fuel prices, and, you know, everybody's outraged right now with what their heating bills are gonna be just to, you know, keep their homes heated this winter, you know? They keep hearing a bunch of different numbers going up, and it's just, you know, food costs and fuel and everything else, and to add on top of that, maybe there's a way, you know, the staff has done a great job getting us in the position that we're in right now, so, you know, with a lot of cushion, maybe there is something that we could do to lower that to the, you know, 1% to 2% range and try to alleviate that a little bit, bring it down a little bit if we can.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Trustee Brady, you always have something to say.
And I'm not gonna fail you this time either. There's never a good time to have a tax levy, increase taxes, never. Mr. Mahoney just turned around and talked about the gas and fuel prices. My station that I always fill up on, raised it 45 cents from this morning, you know, it was 324, jumped up to 369. And I'd have to agree with the majority of the Board as well, starting with trustee Mueller, that that 1% is really something that we should aim for, and all the points that the Mayor point out certainly makes sense at this point in time. So, I'd have to go along with the majority of the Board as well with that 1%.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Brady. Well, thanks, Andrew, I appreciate it. Thanks for all your hard work on this. I think the direction is pretty clear, I just, I think right now, we're still not out of the woods yet, we're just gonna have to do, you know, more with less, I guess is the way it is, but I appreciate you putting all this together, this was an excellent presentation.
Absolutely. Appreciate the feedback as well, and we'll get working on it for the November 2nd meeting. Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Item number six, consider review of the municipal compliance report.
Okay, one more, this one's easy. This is a report that's required to be filed annually by the Pension Board with the Village Board prior to the tax levy adoption. Figured we'd get this one out of the way. It's a, it's a look back at the most recent fiscal year with a projection of where we'll be in the next fiscal year, just to give us an idea of where they're at. Again, this would be moved forward to the Village Board for acceptance, so I would be looking for that motion.
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. Is there such a motion to move item number six to the Village Board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number six, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seven, consider amending committee of the whole and Village Board meeting start times. Do you want to take that one, or do you wanna?
I'll take that one. So, thank you, Bill, for letting me put this on the agenda. Again, it goes, we've, I brought this up in the past. We all work jobs, staff is here all day at 8 o'clock in the morning, you know, they used, there used to be days we wouldn't get out of here until midnight. It was crazy. And we, you know, we thank you, the Board moved it up years ago from 8 to 7:30. I'm asking the Board to consider moving the Board meeting up to 6:30 and the COW at 6. It gives staff a chance also to get out of here a lot earlier than they do. They do a lot of preparing for us, and there's just downtime, they're here, you know, waiting sometimes two hours for the meeting to start, especially for our clerk's office, they do a lot with setting this up. I just- this up. I just, I would appreciate if you guys would consider moving it up for, you know, for staff instead of all that downtime of sitting here and waiting for the meeting to start, and also for ourselves. We can, we can come straight here.
All right, very good. Well, thank you very much. I, I think if the, anyone have any questions or comments on this?
As long as it works for everyone's schedule.
Works for everyone. Very good. All right, cool. Well, I'll, I'll make that motion to move item number seven to the village board meeting.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Trustee Mueller beat you to it, Mr. Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number seven, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number eight, consider Oxcart services for overweight vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Currently, the village receives requests for permits from trucking companies and construction companies to utilize our local streets to deliver overweight and oversized loads to and from their project sites. We do not have a permit system in place to review and issue these permits. We, staff did some investigatory review and found a company called Oxcart. It is a permit management system that has been utilized by over two hundred other communities, where the outfits that are looking for the permits will reach out to Oxcart, and based on our approved ordinance and fee schedule, will receive the request, and through the chain of custody between Public Works and the police department, we will afford the ability for the trucking outfits to be given these permits. There is a fee structure in the ordinance. The, we went with the base cost to the outfits, which would start out at fifty dollars for a single trip permit request. Village, it's, the village of Tinley Park is going to receive ten percent of this permit structure. Can be adjusted upwards, but as our recommendation to start at the low cost of ten percent until we get more situated with the operations, and then from there we can review and adjust accordingly.
Very good. Thank you, John.
How did we do this before, John? Just all manually?
It was all manually. Phone calls were being received by building department with, you know, bread and butter being permits through them. They thought the permitting should go through the building department. Phone calls were getting forwarded to us or police department, and it was, you know, loosely, you know, covered by both police department and Public Works. And this, you know, the, the, the cost allows for all of this to be wrapped into one, you know, process and management system.
Sounds good. Sounds like a good bit of efficiency. Thank you.
Sure does. Any, any other questions from the board? No? Is there a, a motion to move this item?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number eight, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Item number nine, consider traffic signal master intergovernment agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation.
Thank you, sir. This is a renewed maintenance contract with IDOT and other agencies that share our traffic signal maintenance. Again, this needs to be renewed, and we're asking for this to be effective until 2031. The practices that, as maintenance is done, the costs are shared amongst the agencies that abut the intersections.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions?
I got one question. John, what happens when there's an accident there and a pole, light pole, traffic pole is knocked down? Who pays for that?
So typically, it's broken up based on, again, the agencies that abut the intersection. So for example, Hundred Fifty-Ninth and Harlem, as we have, that's a state right-of-way on both of them, but because Orland and Tinley Park also abut there, we have twenty-five percent responsibility. If you look in your backup, you can see all of the intersections that are covered, and it'll tell you who, who has the cost share. So for your hypothetical situation, the cost would be split up as, as shown in that spreadsheet.
Would the person that caused it fall, you know, the driver of the vehicle?
If, if it was, you know, something that the insurance could cover, definitely. If it's a hit and run, then obviously the cost gets bared by the agencies.
Right, right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to move item number nine to the village board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number nine, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number ten, consider contract renewal with ME Simpson for water assessment program.
All right, thank you again. This is an ongoing maintenance contract we have with ME Simpson. As you see in the backup, they deal with fire hydrant maintenance, fire hydrant flow testing, water system leak survey, and valve exercising. We did issue an RFQ back in 2019. FY twenty-two will be the third of four contract renewals, and we're requesting committee and board approval for the renewal of the contract at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars.
Very good. Thank you, John. So contract renewal, expenditure of funds, it's budgeted. Any questions? Nope. Is there such a motion to move item number ten to the board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item ten, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eleven, consider contract for holiday decorations.
Thank you again. This is a contract that was released as an RFP on August twenty-third, 2021. We received one sealed proposal. It's our understanding, reaching out to some of our common submitters due to COVID-related staffing difficulties, they were unable to submit a proposal. We are asking for the committee and board approval for the downtown area decorations. This is a one-of-three-year contract. The current budget available is fifty thousand. This contract is at thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board? Nope. I have a motion to move this item.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number eleven, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number twelve, consider contract for snow removal. John?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This service contract was advertised September twenty-second, 2021. This will take care of the snow removal in the twenty-one parking lots and sidewalks throughout the village. This is, this contract has the option of two one-year renewals. This will be the first year of the contract. We had three contractors submit bids. The lowest bid is Beverly Snow and Ice, who has been a repeat bidder, and they have offered acceptable services. We're requesting the bid at three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to be approved. That is a base bid. Again, as much as we would like to, we are guessing at how much their services would be needed. So to keep the bid package, you know, quantities, which was twenty-five events, that was the number that we will start at. Obviously, it will be prorated based on the actual number of events after the season is completed.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board? Nope. Is there such a motion to move this item to the village board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Do I, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number twelve, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consider renewal contract for snow removal in our cul-de-sacs.
Thank you, sir. This is a year two of three of the contract for cul-de-sac snow removal. Again, this contract was established with a base number of ten events. The low bidder was last year, Roy's in Air Trucking and Excavation. They have proven to be a reliable contractor with reasonable rates. We had the bid come in at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the ten events, but again, we budget for the potential for more, asking for committee and board approval to extend this contract an additional year.
Very good. Thank you, John. Under budget's good. Any questions from the board? Is there such a motion to move this item to the village board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item thirteen, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And item number fourteen, consider contract for road salt purchase.
Last, uh, snow, uh, item here.
Not least.
Yeah. This is the big one, which is for salt purchase. We traditionally wait for the CMS contract, central management services, because as that number gets released, we're able to find, by bidding separately, we're able to see a little bit of savings per ton. We did have our numbers come in at sixty-six dollars and fifty, sixty-six dollars, fifty-seven cents per ton from Morton Salt out of Oak Brook. That is in line with what we're seeing the last couple of years. So that this year's contract is for a total of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Again, this is a base amount. We did budget, obviously, for more than that, but we're hoping not to have to use it.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board?
I do.
Go ahead, trustee Brady.
On the snow removal and the cul-de-sac incident, are they bringing their own salt, or are we providing the salt for those two companies?
We provide the salt. Well, let me, we provide the salt for the cul-de-sacs, but the other, the parking lot one is Beverly Snow and Ice provide their own salt based on that contract amount.
And how about, I know we talked about this for purchasing fuel, but how about the park district? Where does that salt come from?
Their, their contractors provide their own. I have been in conversations with, with Sean Robey and Ryan to start looking at additional ways we can combine our contracts and the potential for the village to save funding. It, it wasn't able to happen this year, but we are working towards.
I know we talked about that for fuel.
Yes. Yes, and, and I spoke with them last week regards to fuel, and that is working out very well.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Nope. Is there such a motion to move item number fourteen to the village board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item fourteen, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. The motion will carry. Item number fifteen, receive comments from the public. Is there any comments from the public? Dan, you want to make any comments? Very good. Well, if there are no comments from the public, we'll, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion to, or adjournment, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you.